So he gets their license plate and he calls them up, "Uh, we got a problem."
Wow.
Wow.
Do you want to come take care of it or do you want the city police to take care of it for you?
That was what he poses to him. We can fix this without a lot of help or we can get all the help we need.
I had your mic on. You'll get it back on.
Think of a deal. Here we go. Dave, you're a fool, buddy. How about that? Karen, I don't know what you're doing with your emails, but I can't open any. He's a virus.
They called us me. The Oskaloosa City Council ordered. Today is June 20th, 2016. Let's start with the invocation by Pastor Alvin Bolzma. Good news chap.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven will be coming to you tonight to seek your guidance and blessing upon the councilmen and women. We ask that your direction will be given to them in the insight. We thank you also for a discussion we might have openly one with another or in a private session. We pray you would each council member, each department head, and those in charge of making our city what it is and even better. We ask that you hear our prayer and forgive our sins. In Christ's name we do pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Do join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Burnett.
Here.
Aldrich.
Here.
Jimenez.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Percy.
Here.
Walling.
Here.
Next item up is the opportunity for community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council. We ask that they keep statements brief. Time is limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions are to be asked of the city staff, council members, or the mayor prior to speaking to the full council so concerns can be properly researched and answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only, so no asking the police or, excuse me, the fire chief, "What the heck was that?" Is there anyone who would care to speak at this time?
Hello council and mayor. My name is Ross Schultz and the business development director at Mahaskal Partnership, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the hospital regarding the C Avenue parking. That we are both in full support of the recommendation by the city to have no parking on either side of the street, or the recommendation by planning and zoning committee to have no parking in front of the hospital due to the safety of both our patients and our emergency personnel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item five is the consent agenda. These are all items that are routine in nature and are going to be acted on presumably in one motion unless something gets pulled off. I did want to draw council's attention to a few items on here. Item J is the appointments to the water board where I have Jason Carter recommended for reappointment and Danny Nance for appointment. Also, item M, which is a resolution approving a contract for transportation with the city of Oskaloosa and 1015 transit. Item O is a resolution scheduling a public hearing for July 18th to consider levying a special assessment against private property for city cleanup at 805 South B Street. And item P, which is a resolution fixing the date for a public hearing on a proposal to enter into a development agreement with Intraco, also known as Cable V. So anyway, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mary, if I could, if you forgive me for interrupting you. There is one thing we should note in the minutes, just so this reflects too. As we've discussed, of course, and as the council is aware, obviously the elevator is not working, so everyone's had to walk upstairs today. I have tried to visit with the Public Information Board to ask about that in the Iowa Civil Rights Commission insofar as how to approach that with any potential ADA issues. I would state and advise the council that I came up here a few minutes ago, at that point in time, there was no one downstairs that indicated they were requiring any type of assistance. I visited with Mark Neff a moment ago, and Mark has graciously indicated he would have a firefighter down there to watch the door as well, to let us know if anybody should show up, and indicate that they needed any assistance, in which event, we can and we'll go ahead and make provision to get any such folks up here if that need should arise. But I would like the minutes to show and reflect that.
Very good. Thank you very much, Dave. Any comments on the consent agenda? Roll call please.
Do we need a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I have a comment, but I think...
Okay, do we have a motion of support for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Now comments.
Regarding item M, which is the transit, 1015 transit, it states in there we're going to do 10,000, and then it's expected we would raise the other eight. What if we don't raise the other eight? Do we have to put it in, or is the contract null and void if it's not raised?
I would say they would terminate service upon reaching that $10,000 pressure.
Okay, so we'd spend it first and then it would stop.
But again, that group is working with the community to fundraise, and you have acquired that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I didn't have that in there, sorry.
Any other comments or questions? Now roll call please.
Yates.
Yes.
Burnett.
Yes.
Aldrich.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Moore.
Pass.
Percy.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Into the regular agenda, item 6A, to consider a resolution adopting a proposal for the fiscal year 2017 property liability automobile equipment and workers' compensation insurance. Proposal is for $210,577. We've Margaret Ratcliffe is here from Midwest One Insurance Services with a presentation. Margaret, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Didn't think I'd have to lower that mic, but I guess I did. My name is Margaret Ratcliffe. I'm with Midwest One Insurance Services here in Oskaloosa. We're an independent insurance agency, and because of that, we serve or we represent many, many companies. And so we have the privilege and the responsibility to check each year with other carriers to see if there are better opportunities for the city's insurance. The last couple of years, we've gone to EMC. They've declined a quote because of the problems with the parking lot around the mall. And so this year, we went to ICAP, which is a pool that communities do use. There's three major players in the state of Iowa for municipality insurance. One of them's Cincinnati, which is who you have your coverage with, and EMC and ICAP. So Cincinnati is glad to go ahead and provide us another quote for renewal this year. Like I said, EMC declined. ICAP said that they would quote it, but they wanted a $50,000 deductible on general liability because of the potential of the liability claims. So I visited with the city administration. We decided that that was not a good choice for the city to have to potentially come up with $50,000 for each liability claim. So, we're with Cincinnati. They provided us a quote. And what I would like to do is start with the paper in your packet that says the insurance proposal for city of Oskaloosa. You've seen these in the past, so I won't go through it line by line by line. I'm going to hit the highlights and then see if you have any questions on it. At the top, it starts with the property. And you can see there was a little bit of a rate increase there. It's approximately 6%. And this covers the blanket coverage for all the buildings and the business personal property. We have it written on a blanket basis because then the coverage can be applied to any building that needs it. In case you have a major loss on a couple of large buildings, if the coverage needs to be reallocated, we can do that. We do carry a 90% coverage rate, 90% of replacement cost. So Mike and I review this each year, and we feel that we do have adequate limits of coverage on the building. Couple of years ago, we went through repricing the different deductibles, and we have a $5,000 deductible, which was kind of their sweet spot. It saved us enough premium that it made it worth it. You go to a much larger deductible and it doesn't save you enough money. So, that's where we're at on the property. The builder's risk policy on the fire station is shown a little bit further down on the proposal, and I separated it out because it's actually written from May of 2016 until September of 2017, which is when the project is supposed to be complete. So it's a fully earned premium, but that's a separate item with the 4515 down below. Okay, then, let's go on. The equipment and computers had just minimal changes, and the rate actually decreased just a little bit. On general liability, you can see that went up a little bit. It's based on the net expenditures of the city, which actually increased by 23%, but the premium bumped up only 10%. Your automobile premiums reflect normal updates throughout the year. We listed that on the second page. We deleted two older vehicles. We added four new ones, and one of them was a very nice fire truck. So that did bump up your premium a wee bit. The umbrella premium reflects an increase as it's tied directly to the general liability and to the number of autos covered on the underlying policies. We did go ahead and get a quote on increasing the umbrella limit from 4 million to 5 million, just to give you that option. Where we've seen umbrella claims come in is on really bad automobile accidents. If you have a fatality, or if you have someone who's injured, paralyzed, and has to have care for the rest of their life, that's where you see the large settlements. How much is enough? Who knows? But at least you know that you are carrying a good limit right now with the 4 million. I think Mike had us bump that up here a couple of years ago. But an option to increase it to 5 million would be a fee of 4,000 or an annual premium of 4,862. You know, so that's a lot of money. But that's, at least you guys have an educated decision then. You know what it would cost to increase it a bit.
So Margaret, on that, you would increase it another $4,000 to go to 5 million?
That's correct. That's correct. Because your umbrella premium right now is at 19,448. You know, and there's businesses in town that have a $10 million liability limit on their umbrella. So, you know, it's just, it's where do you want to spend your money, and where do you feel like you might have, you know, some exposure? But at least you have that option. You know that you can raise it if you feel like you need to. Like I said, though, in the industry, the automobile claims is where we've seen the umbrellas get kicked in at. So... Okay, the next section starts with workers' comp insurance. And Tom Walling, this one's just for you. Our experience mod finally went down, which we were expecting that it would. It went down from the 1.13 down to the .95. And even though your payroll had an increase of about $40,000, the premium did drop quite substantially. And then in addition to getting the longevity discount of 5%, a large premium discount of 14%, we were also able to finally add back in that 8% good experience credit. So now you folks are at a 27% discount on your workers' comp premium. So, good job. And there's been just very few claims since then, and it's there when it's needed. And unfortunately, there can be bad accidents, but they're doing a really good job of managing that. On the second one down below that, the law enforcement liability had a wee bit of an increase. The public officials' liability stayed flat, and the employment practices dropped several hundred dollars, and those are all just normal rate fluctuations. Your employment practices policy still includes a lot of extra coverages that formerly could only be purchased as options, and that includes consent to settle, back wages, EEOC complaint handling, and non-monetary defense coverage. This year, there is an option available to include third-party liability on your employment practices policy. This comes into play where an organization with a lot of interaction with the public can be vulnerable in this area. It protects the city and its employees from accusations of wrongful acts committed against customers, clients, vendors, and suppliers. These wrongful acts can include harassment, including sexual harassment, discrimination, humiliation, and invasion of privacy. And that would increase the premium $853 a year. You know, it's one of those things where when I'm aware of a coverage that's been added that it's now available, I just need to let you know and let you know what a, you know, a scenario might be for that where the coverage might kick in. You know, if you have people out working in the public and one of your employees is accused of doing something inappropriate with one of your customers, this will defend them, and the legal costs are outside of the policy limit. So, it's something that's available. I would recommend it because you do have so many employees that deal directly with the public, but it's a decision that's obviously up to you guys. So it's available. Then we can also add consent to settle is not included in the law enforcement or the public officials' liability, but we can add that to law enforcement for 1,632 and to public officials for 806. And what that is, is that on these professional liability policies, you can purchase that right, consent to settle. And what that means is if you don't agree with what the adjuster wants to pay in one of those claims, you could say, "No, we're going to take this to trial." But what goes along with that, it's a 70, they call it a 70-30 soft hammer clause, where anything beyond what the insurance agent or the insurance adjuster agreed to settle with, the insurance company will pay 70%, but then the city has to bear 30%. So if you don't agree, and you know, they do this all the time, and they generally know which cases they can defend and win, and which cases they're going to lose. But if you feel very, very strongly that you have a law enforcement liability or a public officials' liability claim that you don't want to settle, you can pay extra premium and then you're making yourself a little bit vulnerable then for anything over what they would agree to pay. So it's another one of those things that's out there. Some people want it, some people don't. It's included automatically in the app light. Then, last but not least, is terrorism insurance coverage.
I didn't remember that before.
No. Do you have a question, Tom?
I just don't remember getting that offered before. Is that new?
The consent to settle? No, it was offered last year. Yeah. The premium was a little bit less, but, yeah, it was out there. So terrorism insurance coverage has typically not been purchased by the city. Something that I want to make sure that you're aware of is that the initial level, if it's certified as a terrorist activity, it can be kicked in as a level as low as $5 million. Now, when you look at the property the city has, and if somebody decided to, if a terrorist decided to blow up the city hall and the new fire station, you could get to that $5 million. But here again, the secretary of the treasury has to say that it's a certified act of terrorism. And the other thing is too, that Boston Marathon and Orlando have not been certified as terrorist acts. Even though a lot of people get killed, there's not a lot of property damage. So, if you want to purchase terrorism insurance, the premium is $632 in addition to what you're paying. So you have been offered that. So overall, we saw an increase, or I'm sorry, we saw a decrease of 6.14 over this past year thanks to that workers' comp experience mod adjustment. One other small item that I want to add in here is some data compromise coverage. And historically, as I've worked with Mike, you don't have a lot of data that you keep that it's private, other than the employees. And so here again, how much premium do you want to pay on insurance for something that has kind of minimal exposure? You could purchase $50,000 worth of data compromise coverage, which would cover about 245 people, for notifying them and then giving them one year of free credit protection. That would basically cover a chunk of your employees, because your employee data would be some private data that you'd have on hand. That's $125 a year. Another one of those things that's, I'm not here to spend all your money. It may sound like it. Truly, I'm not. But I do have a responsibility. If I know that there's a coverage available, I need to make it available to you. So, I also want to note that the city has been very proactive and aggressive in their risk management program, and that's acknowledged by the insurance carriers. And they wanted to make sure that I passed that along. There have been some programs implemented over the last several years that have been very, very rock solid. They address any potential loss exposures when we have a claim. It's routed internally. They pull in a Kielish, they pull in the street department, whoever is needed, and they address things right away. And that's noticed and that's appreciated. So, if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. Otherwise, I want to say thank you very, very much.
I'm not sure I tracked fully through the last part when you were talking about the consent to settle.
Okay.
Is that included in this or not?
No. You have an option if you want. It's included in the employment practices automatically. Okay? The employment practices policy includes consent to settle. The law enforcement professional liability and the public officials' consent to settle, that is not included in the premium that's on the front.
Is that that extra $853 you're talking about?
The $853 is the third-party liability that could be added to the employment practices that would protect you and would defend an employee if they were accused of harassing someone outside of here, a client. So you've got third-party liability for an employee...
That's listed here.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's the one you said you recommended?
I would recommend that, yeah, yeah. And the consent to settle is not listed on there because it's something I just wanted to inform you of.
Okay, that's where I was, so it's not listed?
That's correct.
Okay, that's where I was looking. Yeah, I couldn't find it.
Yep, yep, sorry.
Okay. Is that the same about the terrorists?
The terrorism is a separate thing.
But it's not listed either, is it?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Those are things that, well, and historically, the city hadn't purchased it, but I just kind of bring it up each year to let you know what it is.
So then, is the third-party coverage, that $853, is that new? Is that what you're saying?
That is new. That was a new offer this year, yes.
Okay.
So in the past, if someone did that, we weren't covered?
You would have had some coverage under what they call personal injury liability on the general liability policy. So there is some coverage out there for that now. This is over and beyond that, so...
Because I was thinking that the umbrella policy would have probably covered that, I would have thought.
Yeah, and so you do have, you would have the 500,000 under your regular general liability, then the umbrella would come over that, and this would be the 2 million on top of it. So, you know, you've got some underlying coverages there that would need to be exhausted first.
It says right there it does not include that.
I'm looking at the additional insureds, and I was thinking about the Oskaloosa Airport Commission. Do they have a separate policy away from the city of Oskaloosa?
They do. No, they are listed on yours as an additional insured because they are just listed as an They have a separate policy. Okay, wait a second. You're asking if they should be on there or...
Right. I'm looking on the last page of our packet.
Yeah, the city of Oskaloosa, the airport insurance is under the name of City of Oskaloosa.
Oh, okay.
So you don't have to be listed, they don't have to be listed as an additional insured.
Okay, okay. Then I see we've also got the Oskaloosa Municipal Water Department as an additional insured.
We do.
I believe on their policy, they list the city of Oskaloosa.
Yep.
Are there any economies of scale that could be gained by saying, "Okay, we're just going to have all of this done under a single package where we pick up both the water department and the city of Oskaloosa as one collapsed package"?
I would, I mean, I think we would need to just take a real close look at it, but you're still going to base it on things like payrolls and sales and... I mean, we'd have to look at it. There could potentially be some, but you still have the property. You know, property is going to be X amount of dollars, whether it's insured under one name or another. As far as the premium for adding additional insureds, that's pretty minimal, about $35.
Yeah. Okay, just curious.
Okay, all right. Anybody else?
Anybody got any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Do we need to do a vote to go ahead and adopt this insurance package?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, further discussion?
So the staff recommendation was not to include that $853 extra. Is that correct, Michael?
The way I understood it, that's what I thought.
I would say something that should be considered. We did have a tremendous amount of discussion about that. Like Margaret mentioned, we do have underlying coverage that would be exhausted first. I'm trying to think of an event that would exhaust that first, and it would be few and far in between, now that I say that right. So I think it's something that we should continue to look at, but I don't know that it has to be adopted right now. I don't feel strongly one way or the other. I guess that's probably where I'm at, which I know, I know it doesn't help you.
How about the increase in the well?
I think we're good for now.
Or wet.
Yeah, again, I think that's something that we should talk about early next spring when this, when we look at renewal.
Maybe that'd be a good time to explore that third-party
Yes.
...coverage as well, so that we just don't jump in spending the money until we've got a good review of it.
Yeah, and I don't, I can't speak to any analysis that I've done on that. Obviously, the insurance company has had some actuarial look at it, but I don't know what that looks like from our side.
Any further comments? Roll call please.
Burnett.
Yes.
Aldrich.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Percy.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next item is to consider an ordinance changing the parking restrictions along C Avenue East from North 11th Street over to South Park Avenue. That's the first reading. At the meeting on March 21st of 2016, city council directed staff to perform a study regarding the on-street parking restrictions along C Avenue East going from North 11th Street over to Park Avenue. Currently, no parking zone exists on the south side of C Avenue East from North 11th to 400 feet west of South Park Avenue. We've got a figure that's attached that shows that. The main concern was the visibility of vehicles exiting the hospital driveways due to the parked cars that are along the north side of C Avenue East. As part of the study, survey was mailed to the property owners in the affected area. Of the 16 property owners that responded, 7, 44%, want to leave the parking restriction as it is on the south side only. 6, 38%, want to restrict parking on both sides. 2, 12%, want to restrict the parking on the north side only, and one person, 6%, wants to remove all parking restrictions. According to the survey, a majority of the residents, 94%, 15 owners, wanted some kind of parking restriction, whether it's on the south side, north side, or both sides of C Avenue East. This section of C Avenue East is 31 feet in width. That allows for parking on one side of the street but not on both sides. In addition, current city code restricts parking only 10 feet either side of driveway or intersection approaches, which is not adequate for the visibility of exiting hospital vehicles. In order to alleviate visibility concerns for the existing, or the exiting hospital traffic along the north side of C Avenue East, staff is recommending to restrict parking on the north side only, which is option number one. This option would keep one side of the street available for on-street parking to accommodate the residents living on the south side of C Avenue East. Staff also recommends that the parking be restricted 50 feet on either side of the intersection of North 11th Street for the visibility of waiting vehicles at a two-way stop. Planning and zoning commission, at their meeting on May 9th, voted 6, yes, to 1, no, in favor of a different option. Option 2 listed below in detail to restrict parking 50 feet on both sides of the eastern most driveway approaches to the hospital and leave the parking restriction along the south side of C Avenue East. They also recommended a parking restriction 50 feet east and west of North 11th Street on the north side of C Avenue East for two-way stop visibility. And so there's a figure, 1.3, that depicts the details of that, the current parking restrictions and the recommended option. So, staff recommended option number one is to restrict parking along the north side of C Avenue East from 50 foot west of North 11th Street for two-way stop visibility to 325 feet west of South Park Avenue. In addition, restrict the parking along the south side of C Avenue East from North 11th Street to 50 feet east of North 11th Street for two-way stop visibility. And so we've got figure 2 that shows that. The planning and zoning commission recommended option 2, that's to restrict parking from 540 feet west of South Park Avenue to 340 feet west of, 340 feet west of South Park Avenue and 50 feet east and west of North 11th Street on the north side of C Avenue East for a two-way stop visibility. So that's in figure 3. So, we are here for a public hearing, and so I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who would care to speak to us?
Ross, would you mind telling us again what you said for the hospital? Thank you.
From the hospital's viewpoint, we would prefer, I guess, the planning and zoning option that has restrictions of parking on both sides of the street, especially in front of all of our property on C Avenue.
So it's option 2?
Right.
Yes. That's not...
Yes.
Oh, it's figure 2, option 2.
Yes.
Figure 3, option 2. Option 2 only adds...
Mayor, council, if I may, I think what was presented to planning and zoning, there were a number of options presented. One was a staff recommendation, which you see here, and that includes just a restriction on the north side. There was also a second recommendation to fully restrict parking on both the north and the south side. Then P&amp;Z came up with their own option here. And so when this item was forwarded to you tonight, I had asked staff to remove the restriction on both sides because that wasn't truly the, the ones, I just wanted one staff recommendation, not two. And so we arrived at this one here, which was just restriction on, on the north side. So that's where there may be some confusion in the presentation of the item.
So Ross is talking about the one that you have removed?
I apologize. When I was looking at the figure 2, I was thinking that was option 2 as well. So ours, we would prefer option 1 by the city.
So just the north side restriction?
No, both north and south.
Both north and south. Okay, so the one that was removed from your packet, based on my recommendation, sorry. I thought there were going to be too many options. I mean, there you go, so.
Because option 1 starts to restrict the north, but removes the restriction on the south.
Correct. That would be the staff's recommendation. That was, yes, that's staff's recommendation. And then P&amp;Z is this, we did as staff have a third item that we supported, which was restricting on both. But we, I, I had asked our staff just to have one recommendation, not two.
So essentially, what this one does is it maintains no parking on the, on the, on the south side, and then it takes that main opening where the ambulance comes in and out and goes 50 feet on either side of it, is that what the deal is?
Correct.
The two openings, there's two openings there.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Is that what you're saying?
So that's what P&amp;Z thinks.
And then also adds a little bit over there.
On the corner?
Figure 3. That's 50 foot on each side, right?
Yes, on the 11th.
And I'm taking, that's not current, right, no, that's not current right now.
No, current is this.
Gotcha, okay.
From our point of view, restricting parking on, on either side of the street is beneficial because in one way or another, you're going to have people walking across the street trying to get to the hospital, if that's their intent.
Say, say that again, they're going to be walking across the street.
Yeah, so if, if it was switched to no parking on the south side of the street, people would then be parking and then walking towards the hospital, which would still pose a risk for ambulance drivers and people walking across the street.
So Ross, let me make sure I understand. So as it stands right now, there's no one, they cannot park on the south side of the road, so
Correct.
If they park and come to the hospital, they're parking on the north side, and then they, they go right into the facility. However, if we, if the council, excuse me, adopts the restriction on the north side and then cars start parking on the south side, they're going to cross the street to go to the facility.
That would also pose an issue.
Yeah. So then, in essence, MHP is suggesting no parking on both sides would be
Correct, per the planning and zoning of at least restricting.
Or that one.
Correct.
Okay. Clear as day, right?
Yeah. Why does the staff like, I'm going to call it option 1 over option 2, now that option 2 has been formulated?
Go ahead, Keelish.
So if you see the survey, 94% of the residents who responded to the survey wanted some form of a parking restriction. But having said that, there is also residents who, who prefer to park on one side of the street. If you remove parking on both sides of the streets, those residents will not have room to park on C Avenue. It's going to start spilling onto somewhere else on, on, on the east or west of the properties. So that's the reason why we are, we as a staff are supporting to allow parking on one side of the street and restrict parking on one side, so.
But option 2 allows parking on one side of the street, except for a fairly small area.
Right, but option 2, there's other driveway entrances which still continues. I think that is not adequate to give you visibility, or if there's cars parked in between those two red spots, I think it may, it may still restrict the visibility and still hinder with the safety of the hospital. If you see there's other entrances the hospital uses too, which, which will continue be, being to be parked, yes.
How many accidents have we had out of those other entrances?
We didn't look at the accident records. We don't have any accident records.
Do you have any information?
I'll have to check with the police department, and we have some old records as far as 2012 records. I don't know whether the police department has more than that, or... Yeah, same here.
Steve, you were trying to get to the point where the option 1, is that what you're looking at?
Well, when I first started, my option's not up there, which is not to have, have parking on either side of the street. So when I first started chatting with folks, I talked to the hospital first, and true to Ross, who was here, that's exactly what, I mean, they said, yes, that'd be great. I talked to Kelly Brooklander on the corner, because she's got a business there. There's currently parking, as you can see, allowed in front of the mansion, clear over to the other house beside it, so there's parking there for them. And Kelly said yes, and true to form, she said in here as well, that she votes for no parking on either side, except down there on the end where they could, to visit their business. So that's, and if you look at every one of those driveways on the south side, I had somebody tell me one time, somebody not there, that, well, they might want to park out in front. Every one of them can park clear behind their house. Every one of them has a driveway. I walk this street every day in the morning, so I get a close-up view. Every one of them has a driveway that goes behind their house, so there's plenty of parking for folks to park off the street. That's not an issue whatsoever. So I'm curi, I do have a question, though, Keelish. When you did the survey, how do you decide how far to do the survey for? Because the people that are saying no, that, at least three of them on here, don't even live on C Avenue. They live off on a side street. So I'm trying to figure out how far, because you didn't ask me, and I live across the street, so I guess...
Because you started, you got a big driveway.
Well, okay, but you know what I'm saying? I mean, how far, how far do you go? Because you go, you go clear down South Park to not the corner house, but the one next to it, and on the other side, you go down there on 11th. So I'm just curious, I mean, it's people that don't even live on C that said no.
Right.
Well, but North 11th doesn't have any parking, that's why.
Okay. Well, but North Park, or South Park does.
No, that's why I asked North 11th people, because
Okay.
They're already told they can't park on their street, so
I understand.
If they're trying to find the closest on-street parking spot, how far do they have to go? I'm just trying to verify that.
And North 11th must narrow. Yeah. What was that?
So how far did you contact people?
Is it North 11th much narrower than C?
So we did, we contacted everyone on C Avenue from 11th to Park. We contacted everyone on 11th from E Avenue to C Avenue. We contacted everyone from, on North Park from C Avenue to South Park, near the Triangular Island. And I think we may have contacted someone on E Avenue, too. Now, these are with the concerns that the parking may start spilling. If the parking is restricted on both sides, it may start spilling into their properties. So that's why we contacted them.
Got you. Thank you.
I guess I'm a little confused, maybe. I mean, I think we need to find out about the accident record. I mean, Steve, I'm not speaking for you, but you brought it up from a safety consideration, so I don't see why we're affecting all the parking. I mean, if we need to back it up for the ambulance to come in and out of the driveways, I mean, that makes sense, but I don't know why we, if we have to take it any farther than that.
Which is what?
Basically, do it like it is.
And I appreciate that. I mean, we can, we can wait for accidents to happen. I mean, just for whatever it's worth, we had, just, if you wait for things to happen...
I said, we're going to back it up of the entrances.
I got you, yeah.
But basically, what you're saying, Tom, if I heard you right, option 2.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Which is the one with the little red, no, right there, right there.
Which that protects the ambulance entrances as well as...
It takes care of the safety aspect, as I see it, in my opinion, but obviously you disagree, but I just...
Is this a three-reading opportunity?
Yes.
Speaking of which, I haven't closed the public hearing yet. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak at this point? Okay, now I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, as you were. Any further comments? Is somebody in a position where they want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for option 2.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Calgery?
Yes.
Gemaness?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Forsteh?
Yes.
Walling?
Which option?
2. Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. So we are...
We'll get, we'll get the information on the accidents, Jake, it's okay.
C, consider resolution approving the site plan for the new Steven Memorial Animal Shelter located at 1716 Pella Avenue. The Steven Animal Shelter Foundation has submitted a site plan for the new animal shelter to be located at 1716 Pella Avenue. Site in consideration is 7.36 acres in area. It's presently zoned as GC, which is General Commercial District. Proposed site plan illustrates a 6,000-square-foot building, public employee parking lots, water and sewer connections, and stormwater collection and detention improvements. The new building will have a public access from Pella Avenue through the Latter Day Saints Church parking lot and a service access from D Avenue West. The planned land use for this property is pet services, which is permitted in a GC district. Staff has reviewed and approved the site plan with the following stipulations. Number 1, that the easements for the form, excuse me, the storm sewer grading improvements along the east side of the property need to be obtained. Number 2, if necessary, provide post-construction erosion control measures along the northeast and southwest sloped areas. And number 3, to combine and/or replat the parcels associated with the site plan. If necessary, dedicate right-of-way along D Avenue West in order to match the existing right-of-way. Planning and zoning commission, at their meeting on June 7, recommended approval of the site plan with those stipulations in by a vote of 7 yes to 0 no. And staff is recommending the city council approve the resolution for the proposed Steven Animal, Steven Memorial Animal Shelter site plan with the above mentioned stipulations. Do we have a motion supporting that? Second. Got a motion, second. Any discussion?
I'm just curious, and Mike tried to answer my question while he called me. When I went out and drove this, it was interesting, I didn't realize there was a road there. I don't know if that's a road, or that's part of the church parking lot, but it, it goes on past it and is deadheaded. So I'm not su, who owns that road?
I thought that was it, huh?
Are you talking about, again, on the north side, correct, Councilman Walling?
Yes.
Where the parking basically is for the
Yes.
Latter Day Saints.
And you thought it was private?
Owned by the church.
Yeah, okay.
As far as I understand.
It was my understanding, though, there was an easement from the beginning for development, and that easement's already in place to allow this. That was what I was understanding.
That makes more sense.
Correct.
We as a staff have received the easement agreement between the church and the...
I thought that was case, thank you.
Makes more sense. Nobody would have done that if there wasn't a reason.
Any other comments?
We have one more. Mike, on the signage? Yeah, that's, there you go.
Sorry, it's rotated a bit, yeah.
Do we want that to meet our same wayfinding system, as far as colors and whatnot?
I don't know about the color, I mean, dictating that, I could see maybe asking for a monument sign rather than the stick post sign. I don't know that we've necessarily dictated color.
Okay. Just a thought.
But certainly, again, the, the look
Yeah.
The council has had more, more of an ability to persuade developers.
Well, if it was a city facility, it would have the city look, wouldn't it?
It would.
I understand that, but this isn't really a city facility.
And I would say, right now, you know, we don't really have the uniformity, per se, for certain facilities, but we would like to have, based on the redesign.
Any other comments? Well, we've got a motion in a second, I assume, supporting the stipulations as stated by planning and zoning. Roll call, please.
Gemaness?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Forsteh?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Gets us to the end of the regular agenda. Reports from city staff, city manager.
Mayor, council, we just have one update, and that's from the fire chief on the fire station construction problem.
Good evening, mayor and council. We decided that it'd be a opportune time to kind of bring everybody up to speed, since there has been some construction going on over the past couple of months with the fire So we'll go backwards just a little bit, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but just kind of bring everybody's memory back into where we started at. In the fall of 2011, the water department, former water department building was deemed unsafe by structural engineers. At that point, we moved the fire station equipment that was stored over there into the existing facility, which created, oops, jumping on me, which created some close quarters for us. February 2012, we began conversations with city council about the overcrowded conditions and what some options might be for adding a station, adding some bays on whatever the council chose to do at that time. So these are just some more of the close quarter photos that we threw in there. So during the spring and summer of 2012, we, council gave staff direction to go out and start speaking with some other communities that had recently built fire stations, done some renovation projects. From that, city manager, myself, interviewed some prospective architectural firms. At that point, from this inter, from those interviews, we brought that information back to council. Warbach and Associates was selected to begin a conceptual drawings of the station. So January 2, 13, we brought back some conceptual designs from Warbach, three different options. And through those discussions, there were questions arose about the project cost, if the city should actually be looking at something off-site. We went back, talked through those things, brought back more plans. Then we were directed to gather some community input. We had several meetings with, with community members, council members. The result of those meetings came back, they were, the city wanted to keep that in the downtown district. That was in the winter and fall. So summer, fall of 2000, winter of 2013, we started talking about project costs, design features, different funding sources. In February, January and February of 2014, placed on the November ballot, a referendum for the general obligations bond. That bond passed with a $3.1 million price tag on it. In November of 14, again, that, that ballot language passed. We entered into a contract with Warbach for, to finish construction design. September of 15 was our first bid letting. Those bid letting plans come in high, approximately 25% high. Subsequent, lay council rejected those bids, went back to the draw... Subsequently, council rejected those bids, went back to the drawing board again to redesign the, the station. So from October to December, we redesigned the plans, second bid letting, early January of 16. Those bids came in, DDVI was awarded the low bid. So here's, here's kind of what we wanted to get to after that brief review. This was, work actually started in March. This is sandstone coming in, they're starting to remove the parking lot surface. This is the over excavation that had to occur because of substandard soils that were out in that lot. So about two and a half feet was dug out of that lot, hauled off, and then rock was brought back in to meet good compaction. You'll notice throughout most of these, you're gonna see power lines and things like this. These were some other utility concerns that we had to deal with. This is, as the gravel was starting to be brought back in, they brought it in and layered it out and then compacted it, the pole that you see are the existing light pole that was in the, in the parking lot at the time. We had to wait for that one because it actually fed some other streetlights, so they had to do some rerouting on that, and American did. Again, this is just more compaction, I clipped this picture in because this was the storm sewer, some of the storm sewer stuff that was laid out. A lot of the cost of this project goes into things that you may not see. There, it's underground work that's being done, and once the building's on top of it, you never see it again. But there was a lot of infrastructure that had to be put in. More of the storm sewer connections that was also placed in front of the station. This is the current view of our existing, out, looking out of our existing apparatus bays. This was taken as they were putting in the nor, new storm sewer and sanitary sewer This is a view looking to the northwest. After the grade work had been done, the sanitary and storm sewers had been put in. The storm clouds there is what we run into there at the end of April, that got us some wet conditions where we had a little problem getting compaction tests to pass. So that's, since been corrected, but that's what kind of held up our apron, getting placed back in in a timely manner. Here you're gonna see, again, this is looking to the northwest, these are, the footings have already been poured, stem walls are put in, the block, concrete block, cinder block goes on top of these stem walls. Some unforeseen problems that we run into, as the footings and stem walls were being put in, was we found out that where we thought the storm sewer, or the sanitary sewer ran from the existing building, it, it didn't run where we thought it did. They run into it on the outside in the alley. So what this photo is, is we had to cut a trench into the existing apparatus bay and lay in new sanitary sewer lines and storm sewer connections. The, we opted just to refill these with the gravel at this time, because it's like we didn't want to put concrete in it till we figured out what, there may be something else come up. So we opted just to pack that with gravel, it's more confined for us for, for the time Again, this is just more stem walls that are poured, this is be looking to the southwest These were taken Saturday, these photos are taken Saturday. We're actually up on the third floor of the band room. What you're looking down on now is the elevator shaft and the stairwell that would be coming, that will be coming up to all three levels. And then we're gonna pan out a little bit, this will be looking to the northwest. As you can see, in the top corner there, that opening up there is actually the footing for the maintenance pit, the service pit. Stem walls are formed up today, they're, they're due to pour them tomorrow. Then the next photo you're gonna see is the L-shaped portion, which is, you see the plumbing there for the restroom facilities, as well as the office area, those stem pipes are coming up, and then the, the three storage room bays along First Avenue. So what's next? This week, plans are to have a mason on site. They'll be laying the first cord of cinder block along that L-shaped. That will get them prepped for next week of pouring the floor in that L-shaped area. Also, they're doing grading work out front. We're hoping to have concrete back in front of the apparatus bays by the end of this week. So that will let us move back in, with the exception of the westmost bay door, we're gonna leave that gravel for the time being, because the new fire truck won't fit in, we're lacking about two inches of being able to get that in. By leaving it gravel, we can change the grade and get it to where we can get that in the, in the building. So where are we today? The start date was March 28. The total contracted working days were 440. We've used a total of 60 days thus far. Gives us a total of about 379 days left in the contract. In fact, throughout the holidays, things like this, we, we end up with a projected completion date of about August 1st for the total project. Anybody got any questions?
Freshly, I remember you mentioned three bays. Was one of the options the fourth bay?
Yeah, the fourth bay is in, yes.
So we are doing the fourth bay?
Yes.
That's what I thought, okay.
The three options was when, when we were originally back on the conceptual designs, there was, and I don't remember what three options, there was a single bay and a double bay and.
Why don't you go back and show me? It'd be the, the one with, what it looked like, a box.
Yes, it would be, this, this is actually, where the maintenance pit is, that's the fourth bay.
But we are, I just wanted to confirm.
Yes, that is correct.
We're doing the fourth bay, 'cause I thought we were. All right, thank you.
Yes. So you've got one bay there, and then the next two, there, you can't really see them right now because they've got them covered with gravel, 'cause they're, they're doing some grading. If we go back one more, maybe, now the, the long bay there where you see the short stem wall, that's, that's, that would be bay number one.
Right.
Where it was programmed for the area. And the other two, you just can't see them because they've got them covered with gravel.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, so so far, would you, would you estimate that we're on time?
I asked that very question Friday. We've been having construction meetings about every two weeks. They feel like they're right on cue. Out of that meeting that we had last Friday, they're still saying that they'd like to have a roof on it by October, over the new portion of it. Again, weather can change things, but the, the thing that, that's really gonna be kind of amazing here, I think, over the next couple of months, is there was so much underground work that had to be done. Now all that's done, and you're gonna see the walls come up pretty quick, and then a roof come on it, and then it's probably gonna, it's like everything, it's gonna slow down again, 'cause then you get on finish work on the inside. So it's like any typical construction project, you, the long time getting anything started underground, and then it just kind of blossoms up, and everybody thinks, wow, it's about done, and then it tends to slow down again when you get in the finish work on the inside.
Is there an incentive for them to finish on time?
Pardon?
Is there an incentive for them to finish on time?
Yeah, there, there's a, there's a, I've lost my terminology here, there's a, if they don't, there's a penalty if they don't get it fitting on time. I've lost my.
Liquidated damages.
Liquidated damages, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mike.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Anything else, city manager? City clerk, anything?
No, sir.
Any city attorney?
Nothing.
Okay, and thank you again for the, the comments beforehand. Joe? Anything from city council members? Okay?
Nothing.
Nothing, sir.
Tom?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, we had great momentum to get this meeting done with, I'll go ahead and slow it down. The, in the various correspondence I was looking through, I noticed that we had a letter from Senator Charles Grassley, dated June 10th, saying, "Congratulations on being awarded Tree City USA recognition for 2015. Salute you and your commitment to establishing a healthy community for us. These forests are integral to air and water quality, as well as energy conservation in your community. So as your US senator, I'm pleased to send my best wishes on this extraordinary occasion. On behalf of all Iowans, I commend you on a job well done. All the best to you, and again, congratulations, sincerely Chuck Grassley, United States Senator." So anyway, wanted the council to be aware that stuff we do gets noticed every now and then. I've got nothing further, do we have a motion for adjournment? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.